Okay, well, what I wanted to take up is something that Mr. LaRouche has been talking about quite a bit lately, and it's something that we, everyone who organizes, deals with in the population and in yourself. And it's the question of liberalism. And the opposite of liberalism is truth. Or, as I call this event, "truth over party." So if you want to look at what is wrong with Senators Kerry and McCain, two veterans who should really know better, who decided to try and provide a fig leaf for Obama's illegal actions in Libya. And it's worth thinking, when Hitler had his friends burn down the Reichstag, what happened was he came running into an emergency session and said, "We're under attack, we're under attack. I can't afford the time to go through parliamentary procedure." And the foolish German parliament passed something called the Ermächtigungsgesetz, the Enabling Law, which meant that they had voted their own strength out of existence, and they were giving Hitler dictatorial powers to do whatever was necessary because supposedly the nation was under attack. So you'd say, "Why would two seasoned military veterans, Kerry and McCain, decide to vote themselves out of existence and tell the president, 'Go ahead, you can bomb whoever you want, as long as you want. Don't let the elected representatives of the American people stand in the way.'" And that's the question of liberalism. And you may say, "Why?" We're going to get to that. But this is why, right now, the United States and all of civilization are on the brink of potentially a dark age. So I was thinking about this, and how you think of the word, because you say things like, you know, if you're having an ice cream sundae, you'd say, "Be liberal with the chocolate sauce," which, you know, maybe is free, be generous, or whatever. But what we're going to look at is that actually liberalism, even though it seems to have the same root as liberty, actually means slavery. And what people mean today, who call themselves liberals, liberal, is basically, "Look, I want to do what feels good, and I want you to do what feels good. And we should both agree, we're going to be comfortable, we're going to do what feels good, and the only limit to your feeling good is if it infringes on my feeling good." So keeping that in mind, now I want to look at something where you can see liberalism at work. And it's on the question of something that has become controversial, thanks to Al Gore's lying about it, which is the question of global warming and climate change. And in a recent issue of the EIR magazine online, Larry Hecht just published an article which is pretty conclusively showing that we're actually headed for probably around 2019, 2020, a mini ice age, where we're going to have much colder than normal temperatures. And what I want to look at here is, this was one such ice age. This painting was done in 1677, and it's the River Thames, which doesn't typically freeze over. As you can see from the picture, it's pretty frozen. And they had such a cold spell in the years 1645 to 1715. Now, can I have a picture of the sun? What you're looking at here is a picture of the sun. Rachel showed something of this, we're not going to take up all of it. You see the sun here, and the Earth is that little blue dot with its own various magnetic fields, but what you see is this thing that's like, almost like a parabola, the large blue, you've got some solar activity, it looks like a coronal mass ejection, and you have an electromagnetic field from the sun which goes out to Jupiter so very strongly. When the sun is very active, that magnetic field is a very strong shield of the Earth. And when that is a strong field, it gives us protection from cosmic radiation which hits our planet from not only within the Milky Way galaxy, but one of the things that you may have seen on our website, if you look at the 62-million-year cycle question of our solar system bobbing in and out of the plane of the galaxies, that there are other galaxies. And these other galaxies can emit large amounts of cosmic radiation. So when the sun is particularly active, there's a large, a very strong magnetic field which shields our planet, so we get hit by less electromagnetic radiation. And that's, go to the next one. This is very significant because the cloud cover is directly affected by the amount of electromagnetic radiation, or cosmic rays, cosmic rays hitting our atmosphere. So what you see here is just a funny little diagram of the cosmic rays striking the atmosphere, get a certain kind of ionization, which allows the water vapor to condense and form clouds. So when you have a lot of cosmic radiation, you have more cloud cover, more cloud formation, and as you might expect, if you have more clouds, the surface of the Earth is cooler. Now, what allows us to get more cosmic radiation? It's if the sun is not that active. If the sun is very active, we have the protection from the cosmic radiation, so we have less cloud formation and higher temperatures. But when the sun goes into a period of being less active, less sunspots, less solar flares, less coronal mass ejections, then the electromagnetic field is weaker, and then we are susceptible to get bombarded with more cosmic rays, and we get more clouds, and the temperature goes down. So what was happening, for example, during this little ice age, is that they looked at pictures of, they were observing the sun, and there was almost no solar activity. And the sun goes through cycles, which you'll see in a second. The sun has a cycle which is between nine and 13 years. We're in a 13-year cycle right now, which goes between what's called a solar minimum and a solar maximum. When it's in maximum, which is what we're in right now, and it's going to a peak at the end of 2013, you get more activities, more cosmic radiation, you know, more solar flares, more, less cosmic radiation. You get more solar flares, sunspots, coronal mass ejections, and so on, which would block us from the cosmic rays, which would tend to make the planet hotter. There's also a correlation between these activities and earthquakes and volcanoes, but they're not causal. That is, having a solar flare doesn't cause the earthquake. Probably, it's more likely that there's something bigger that causes both, but they seem to come together. At any rate, so you have these 9- to 13-year cycles, but those cycles are also on a cycle, so that it seems every 200 years or so, when you're going through one of these cycles, they get something which is called a Mauder, M-A-U-N-D-E-R, minimum, where the sun is almost inactive at all. That its maximum is much lower than a normal maximum, and its minimum is almost no activity whatsoever. And it was during that period in the 1600s that you got this little ice age. The sun was very inactive, we had a lot of cosmic rays hitting the planet, cloud formation, the temperature went down, and by a substantial amount. So there is evidence of this correlation. This one shows the temperature anomaly, you can see in degrees Celsius, and on the other side is the cosmic rays. And what you see, isn't that something, this is almost a perfect correlation between the amount of cosmic radiation and the temperature? I guess it would be... Yeah, you want to see inverse. Do the next one. Now, this is interesting, too. This is the sunspot cycle length and temperature. So what you see is that there's a very clear, I mean, the curves are almost identical, correlation between the sun's activity, right? If the sun is more active, which is implied by the sunspot cycle length, the temperature is higher. The sun is more active, there is less cosmic radiation, less clouds. And this is quite clearly closely related. So this is very striking because, what is this about man-made climate change? I mean, here you can see a very, very clear, not even really a questionable, correlation between the intensity of the activity of the sun and the temperature here on Earth. Now, do you think the traffic in Manhattan has more of an impact than what's going on with the sun on our climate? So according, right now, to three independent U.S. studies, and one, you can take the slides down, and one out of St. Petersburg, Russia, what we're in apparently is a long cycle of descent of activity of the sun, so that what they're saying is, we're going to a peak late in 2013. And then there's a new cycle of about 11 years, where the sun is going to be even less active. So we're at the peak of 2013, so about halfway through that, about six years from now, 2019, 2020, we're going to have some very cold weather on this planet. Now, you think about that. I mean, if you know that, don't you think we should be prepared? Like, maybe there are places in the north where it's going to take us longer to grow the crops? Maybe we should have some greenhouses? Maybe we should have more nuclear power plants? I mean, maybe some, I like it cold outside, but I definitely don't like freezing. I think if it's cold outside, you should heat your house. So you would think that people would be prepared for this, because that's what human beings do. So you look at, you take the data, and you say, "Oh, it looks like, given this correlation, probably six years from now, we're going to have some pretty cold weather that gives us some time, and we should prepare." And in fact, it's worth thinking that, as Rachel, I think, brought up, we've had 550 million years that we've been able to document major extinction crises, where, this is very interesting, probably 95% of every species that's existed on the planet has been wiped out. Almost everything, from the beginning of when you ever had life to now, about 95% of whatever species existed has been wiped out. And you have to ask yourself, for example, the dinosaurs, which was 65 million years ago, the most recent one, do you think the dinosaurs had any idea what was coming? Were they out running around preparing? LaRouche always likes to look at the question of brain mass. He says, "You take the brain," I think a dinosaur's brain is about the size of a kitten, a kitten's brain, okay, and their mass is enormous. So they didn't have too much mental power, so they were not prepared. And then you have the other case of one of the creatures which did survive the last extinction crisis, which you might have seen. Leandra attempted to interview a toad on Al Pac TV, because the toad somehow did survive the last one, but he was unable to tell us anything about it. And it sort of makes us suspect that his survival wasn't all that willful and deliberate. So you can see, the question of the human species surviving one of these extinction crises actually depends on us not being liberals. That is, we have to know if something is true or not true. We have to know if we're headed for an ice age or if we're not, and if our data is accurate. And that's the funny thing about this global warming, man-made global warming business, because if you argue with people who believe in it, you have these, I had this hilarious conversation at William Patterson University. We were in a class, and there was a young man who believed very much in global warming. So I said, "Well, what do you think the cause is?" He said, "Deforestation. We've cut down all the trees." And I said, "Well, you know, the United States actually has more trees now than it did in 1492. FDR alone planted 3 billion trees. I mean, we've been doing so much reforestation." So then he said, "Oh..." But that didn't stop his argument. So then we had a discussion about, "How come it was so cold in April? We have all this snow, it's much colder in there." Well, he said, "That's what I mean." I said, "But you said global warming." He said, "No, it's climate change, it's climate change." So now it doesn't have to be warming, it can be cooling, it doesn't matter if it's just, if it's not what it normally is. Whatever it is, the point is, the human beings are destroying the environment. So you might begin to have a glimmer of someone whose so-called method is this arbitrary. First, it's based on deforestation, which didn't occur, then it's not global warming, it turns out it's actually global cooling, but it's still climate change. That maybe if you try to address the crisis civilization is facing from that standpoint, your chances of survival are not very good. And this is what you get in the Congress with these silly Democrats and Republicans who say, "Well, maybe what you're saying is right, but I have to stick to the party line." Like this young kid, right? Why did he, why did he have to go along with it? So probably his whole family and all of his friends believed it. So rather than be the talk of, you know, I had a year and a half, no, two years ago, I was back in Bar Harbor, Maine, with some of my liberal, you know, colleagues of my past childhood, and they were talking about the global warming deniers. Just like denying the Holocaust, the people who deny that there's man-made global warming. It was a very funny conversation. So anyway, so people don't want to tell the truth because they feel they're going to be called names or ostracized, you know, "You're a denial of the evil of mankind living on the planet," you know? And so people don't speak up, they go along, they go along with this nonsense. So that's what you get from people like Senator Kerry, who said, "Well, I have to toe the party line. I can't go against Obama. I mean, if I go against Obama, then he might not win the next election, and then maybe the Democrats won't win, and then maybe the Republicans will win." Well, at this point, what's the difference? What's the difference? And then you think about, what are these party lines? We'll take what I have observed, which is other than in physical appearance, the absolute identity between Barack Obama and Chris Christie. I mean, what is apparently the party line of both parties is that Goldman Sachs is sacred and untouchable, that they have to be bailed out at all costs, and that if you're going to bail them out and you don't have enough money, you should kill off the weaker members of your population. So that's the party line. So you're going to get it from both sides, and no one wants to buck it, because that's how you go along to get along. And you think about how pervasive this is, and how crazy people are, because every state virtually, there might be three that are not completely bankrupt, but I don't think they're even doing that well, virtually every state in the Union is bankrupt. Every single state is shutting down fire stations, firing police officers, you know, not fixing their roads, cutting the teachers, "We're going to have class sizes of 270 pretty soon." You know, it's, so, given that, do you think there might not be one governor who would get up and say, "Why don't we go for Glass-Steagall? You have to do what's popular, don't offend anyone." And this is why the United States, I mean, the reason that the United States, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, is, look, our nation was not founded because of an ethnic group, or a race, or a piece of land, or a language, or something. It was founded on principle, that is, that human beings are unique, that every single human being has a creative potential, and that the purpose of the government is to protect the development of this creative spark of each individual. So what did the United States do? Well, Alexander Hamilton conceived of an economic system which was not monitorism. It wasn't based on fondling your money in the here and now. It was an idea of, where should our nation be 50 years from now, 100 years from now? We're going to make our government capable of issuing the credits, so that we can actually think of a future where the nation has more people in it, at a higher standard of living than we have today. And if you think about the last 50 years in the United States, our nation has become disoriented. We've lost our way. In the wake of the Kennedy assassination, and then, in a sense, what was more brutal than the assassination of Kennedy was the Warren Commission, because people already knew that it didn't make sense that somehow a sitting president could just be killed by a lone assassin. People thought that was a kind of weird story, especially since the bullet had to go like this. And so they didn't trust it, and then you get a commission investigating it from the government, and the commission comes down and gives you a report, which is a total cover-up. And so what happened is, people became fearful, and people became pessimistic. And when you're afraid, you don't think about the future. You can't think, when you're in a state of fear, you are stuck in the present, you don't think about the future. So if you try and think, when was the last time our nation had a mission? The last thing I can think of is Kennedy saying, "We're going to land a man on the moon in this decade," where we had a 10-year perspective, that we were going to do something that exceeded the ability of what we had at that moment. You had Franklin Roosevelt before that, with the Tennessee Valley Authority, the Rural Electrification Administration. You had Abraham Lincoln with the Transcontinental Railroad. You had George Washington with the System of Canals. But basically, since this period of the 60s, our nation has not had a future orientation. We have instead had an assault of liberalism on our previous values of scientific progress and generosity of spirit. Think about Anne Rand, her book, "The Virtue of Selfishness," that people were told after the assassination, after the Vietnam War, "You can't change the world. Just worry about yourself. Just feel good." I mean, what can you see about a country that has so many massage therapists? You know, you have to think about it. Why is this like a major, I'm not against anyone who's a massage therapist here, but really, I mean, there is something wrong with that. And then you have these weird bumper stickers, like, "Practice random acts of kindness." What is that? What is a random act of kindness? Sex? And then you have the idea, everyone should just, since we're such a blight on the planet, and we consume too much, and we shouldn't have scientific progress, what everyone should do is move into a teepee. But you have to make sure you have an electrical socket, because you have to bring your food processor, so you can eat banana peels after you turn them into juice. So this is what happened to our nation. We became insane, we're really insane, we act insane, and you tolerate these things, and you say, "I can't speak up, because, you know, I might hurt somebody's feelings." You know, it's, if you saw a child about to get run over by a truck, and someone says, "The truck is going to stop, don't worry about it." Well, you know what? If you tell the guy he's a jerk, and you run and save the child, you know what? You might hurt his feelings. Might hurt his feelings, but you would save the child. And that's, that is the fight. And I'll tell you, we have, you look at Obama, who literally cannot, he can't even think beyond his ego. He has no ability to relate to the population. Even the Republicans were not proposing eliminating Medicare. And he's now saying, "We should get rid of these things," which actually don't even have to do with the budget. You realize Social Security and Medicare are items that people pay into from their paycheck, they're not part of the budget. So it just shows a certain bizarre kind of mean-spiritedness to say that this is what we have to cut. And then you look at the people that he's surrounded himself with, like this Samantha Power's husband, Cass Sunstein, who's one of the behavioral economists that were advising the administration. And when I first heard him, I didn't know what behavioral economy was, so I decided to Google Cass Sunstein's book. And now, I'm sorry, I can't remember what it was called, but it was really horrifying, because there's no truth. What you do is, if you want to know the answer to something, like how many jelly beans in a jar, one of the famous questions that was asked to African-Americans if they were trying to register to vote in the South. If you want to know how many jelly beans in a jar, what you do is, you find a crowd of people, and you ask them, "How many jelly beans in this jar?" And then you take the average answer, and if you have a really large number of people, then you should have an answer that approximates the right number. Now, it doesn't matter if you have someone in your crowd who is an absolute expert at counting jelly beans, or who knows what the volume of a jelly bean is, and can figure out, you know, precisely how many beans in the jar, or even if there's someone in there who counted the jelly beans and put them in the jar, and they know the answer, it doesn't matter. You have to take an opinion poll. Now, think about this, if you had a brain tumor, see, you can't know truth, so you can't have a specialist. What you would do is, you really want to get a very good answer, so you should probably get a football field, and you should go out into the city of New York, and you should just cram as many people in the football field as you can, and give them all a laptop, and then ask them where your brain tumor is and what you should do about it. So this is behavioral economics. This is what our current President Obama thinks is the way you arrive at policy. I mean, this is really terrifying. So I was thinking about, given this, given what's happened to the country over these last 50 years, why is it that we're not like six feet under already? Because this is pretty rotten. And actually, you really have to appreciate the role of Lyndon LaRouche, who's 89 years old, who created this organization out of, you know, the most maverick creative minds at a number of universities on the East Coast. And in the late 80s, here he is, again, a question of acting on principle, a Franklin Roosevelt Democrat recruiting Ronald Reagan, because he knew that the East Bloc was going bankrupt, and that the Soviet Union could pose a military threat. And so he recruited Ronald Reagan to go along with the Strategic Defense Initiative, so-called the stupid name Star Wars, but the idea of a defensive system against nuclear attacks, so that you could end the Cold War. And it was Reagan taking up LaRouche's idea that allowed the Berlin Wall to come down in the way that it did. And it's worth thinking, where would we be had that not been done? And LaRouche paid dearly for it, because what did they do with him? They threw him in prison right after that. And then he was released under Clinton. Now, as Rachel referenced, what we have done, what just, and everyone should look at the panels on the website, they keep posting more of them from our conference in Germany, is what you now have is the best scientists, the best economists, the best classical musicians from all over the world, from every continent of the planet, coming together around the most profound ideas, and creating the potential where we can address this. And then here in the United States, in a sense, we can be grateful that Obama is his own worst enemy, because he has been so unbelievably criminally negligent and insane, that what's happened is, as Stephanie went through, is you have now a bipartisan, or nonpartisan, or whatever you want to call it, patriotic core in the Congress, from Republicans and Democrats, who are coming together to fight on principle. And they're fighting both on the Glass-Steagall Act, where we, I think we have 23 cosponsors now, I think it's so far three Republicans, the rest Democrats, and you have this lawsuit against Obama in the House of Representatives with 10 congressmen, that seven Republicans against Obama in the House of Representatives of 10 congressmen, that's seven Republicans and three Democrats. And what you find is that the individuals involved, both on the constitutional question of the war powers and the Glass-Steagall, is a massive overlap. It's the same group of people. So I think that, given what's been happening, should give us evidence that we do have the potential to win this fight. I don't think it's guaranteed. And I wanted to address this question of liberalism, because I think that every person here needs to take it up if we are going to be strong enough to do what's required of us in the next days, which is that we would like Glass-Steagall passed and Obama out of politics by the end of the summer. And the last thing I wanted to say is some famous words from LaRouche a few weeks ago to some of us, which is that he said, "When you're entering into a war, the first enemy you have to defeat is the enemy within." Thanks.